And good evening and welcome to the February 24th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Schools. We are so glad to have those of you with us tonight and those that are watching on the television. We're glad to have you aboard as well.
At this time, I'd like to ask you to stand that we have students from Discovery School at Bellwood tonight to lead us in our pledge, "Follow the environmental silence." And you'll want to remember Ms. Renier and her brother, who is in the hospital this time. So now our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. But before you students sit down, I'd like you to go back to the microphone and the podium. I'd like to know who you are, grade level? I know where you go to school. MacFadden, right?
They don't all go to Discovery School.
They don't go to Discovery School?
She does.
One out of three? Pretty good, okay. Tell her, give us your name, please, your grade level, and where do you go to school?
I'm Addie and I do go to Discovery and my grade is third.
Okay, thank you. Ladies?
I'm Zoe Chavis and I go to Segal Middle. I'm in eighth grade.
Okay.
I'm Olivia Ritchie. I'm in 11th grade at Segal High School.
So how did you two ladies from Segal, how did you get involved with our pledge tonight from Discovery School? Do you're a former Discovery School student?
Yes, sir.
Very good. We're glad to have you to come back and be part of Discovery School tonight. Thank you, ladies, very much. Did a wonderful job. All right, approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. King. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Barrett?
It's fine, yeah.
Either way, we got it approved. Are those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Communications, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Dr. Stacy Bird and ask her to come to the microphone, please, and I think she'll be able to understand why we do have guests from other schools with us tonight.
Yes, thank you, board members and Dr. Gilbert, for having us here tonight. I am here on behalf of Discovery School's robotics team and we are going to present a little bit of information about the history of our team and what we were able to accomplish this year. So, Dr. Charlie Apigian, professor at MTSU, his son was on our team this year for the very first time. And we advanced all the way to regionals at Auburn University. And when I returned from home, I had a very heartfelt, emotional email from Dr. Apigian, and this is an excerpt from what he said. He feels like the experience that Sam had on the team was indeed life-changing for him. And I feel like if an 11-year-old is having a life-changing experience at a robotics competition, we must be doing something right here. So it all started seven years ago. I had a student, Kellum Johnson, who came to me one Monday morning and said, "Hey, you're never going to believe what I did this weekend. Well, I built this robotic arm." And I knew that I had to develop that talent. I had to find a way to help him build bigger and better robots. And I knew about this program from a previous school system that I taught in and thus started the journey. It's a six-week program. It involves up to over 150 hours after school on the part of the students and the adults that choose to mentor these students. We're given materials and with those materials, like plywood, PVC pipe, a Vex Cortex, a controller, some wires, wood screws, machine screws, the kids go through the whole engineering design process and they come up with this amazing device. But there's more to it than that. They market this robot, they try and sell it, they do a 25-minute presentation to judges, they create a team exhibit where they, again, try to market it. They're judged through an interview, they create a webpage, and then they compete in the robotics part of the competition. So, in this picture, you can see Mr. Chavis, who is one of our invaluable mentors, working the kids through the engineering design process. In this picture, they're actually testing a prototype on one quadrant of the playing field that the kids built. And then this was at Auburn University. So, so what? So what does that mean? That's great, it's an after-school program, we don't turn anybody away, there aren't any tryouts. And the beautiful thing about Best Robotics is if you go on and attend another school and they don't offer the program, you can return to your former team. So Olivia has returned for six years. She'll be a senior next year, and I think that's a huge testament to what this STEM program means to her. And Zoe just returned for her third year. So, I'll let them speak to that in just a minute. But, three years ago, I did some doctoral research and I used Best Robotics as my treatment. And I found some interesting results when it came to TCAP and science. And I found, I used my fifth graders, or the fifth grade at the time, they were the control group, and the sixth graders were the treatment group. It's a middle and high school competition, I should say that. And I found some amazing things. When I looked at their 2012 scores, they were all right, but what the treatment group got was a huge, was a pretty significant spike in their average scale score. And then when I looked at just the treatment group, what my sixth graders did, and I divided it by gender, the females closed the gap. And that's a beautiful thing to me. Beautiful, probably because I am a female. But I just think girls are so hesitant when it comes to math and science. And I love that 80% of the returning students are female. So, with that being said, this year, we came in second overall and we got best middle school, not too bad for an elementary school. We also won best webpage. When we advanced to regional, we came in 12th out of 56 teams from 17 hubs in six different states in the southeast. And the project engineering notebook carries the largest amount of points in the overall score, I believe it's 30, is that right, guys? And we came in third.
Wow.
Only two high schools were ahead of us, so I'm extremely proud of them. So I'm going to go ahead and ask Zoe and Olivia to come on up, and they're just going to say a little bit about what the program means to them, and then we'll hear from a couple of our mentors.
As I said earlier, I'm Olivia. I've been on the robotics team for six years now. And, you know, I started when I was 11, in the sixth grade, and it really opened my eyes to how much I loved math and science. Like, I didn't really understand the value of math and science until I got into robotics program. And I just really got interested in it and I kept returning, and even now, six years later, I'm still learning things from the program. And it's not really as much building anymore, but it's mentoring other students and it's getting involved with everyone on the team and just, it's a really great thing.
As Dr. Bird said, I'm like, this is my third year coming back. And Olivia said a lot of what I would've said, but the math and science, at first, I was kind of hesitant towards that. I was actually going to do the booth, but I decided to do the, like, the robotics side of it. And it's helped me a lot, like, because when you're in sixth grade, you don't, obviously you don't really know what you're going to do. But it's definitely helped me, like, decide my path, I guess, towards my career. And in the videos that are playing, you'll kind of see the robot manipulating some of the devices that we played with this year on, like, the playing field. So you can kind of see how the robot moves from its point of view, and we filmed that, like, using a camera, I guess.
Thanks. I'm going to ask Ms. Allen come up and share a little bit about her contribution to the team.
Hi, I'm Mary Allen. I'm the art teacher at Discovery School. And I wrote down my thoughts so I wouldn't forget anything, because I was really glad that, you know, we have the chance to come up here and share with you. Team Exhibit is the part of the robotics team that comes up with the major design logo and marketing themes for this year's game. The exhibit, they build an eight-by-eight-foot display that educates others about our team and demonstrates our innovation and creativity. When we started competing at the Nashville Hub, our unusual imaginative approach to the giant display caused the judges to reconsider and increase how many points we may be awarded for creativity each year. So we changed the game when we started competing there. Members of Discovery's Team Exhibit have built a giant flybrain, a large slimy and glittery octopus, and this year, a gorgeous turquoise 18-wheeler with lights and moving wheels, so detailed, there was even a little air freshener tree hanging from the rear mirror. The shirt and logo designs and the type of business we create and the display are all ideas that the students come up with. The brainstorming session can take hours and the ideas from that guide us for six weeks. When we begin, it's fun, because a kid will have an idea that's all right and most everyone will agree with it, and they'll tell me, "Okay, we're ready." And I have to say, "No, you're not." They draw and think and push those ideas until we have moved completely out of any realm of ideas that we started with, and all the ideas are written down. The brainstorming is led by students while I pretend like I'm cleaning something, and they eventually get to a point where the wildest ideas start to make some kind of sense. Two or three ideas are put together and someone hollers an idea that may not be the sum of the previous ideas, but it would not have happened if all those others had not come before it. When we start to ask each other, "Can we do that?", we know that we're ready to start building and working. In art, science, math, and in school, you want students to know how to access the part of their brain that does things in a different way than anyone else. Those unique ideas and the school's ability to show their value empower students to create and compete in fields that seem to contain a lot of established answers. This is active learning. There's a problem that the students solve together, on their feet, with parameters, a goal, a time limit, and a product that is shared with audiences beyond the school. The end.
Thank you very much. Board members, any of you have any questions that you'd like to ask about the project?
We have two more mentors that would...
Okay, that's fine.
I am Beth Warren. I did the marketing and webpage. I was very excited for this to be my first year to mentor for the Discovery School robotics team. I witnessed it for two years previously, and it only took me about 10 minutes to say yes after Dr. Bird asked me to do it. The marketing team is tasked with giving the presentation about our company. We consulted with logistics experts and obtained demographics, and we created business cards, compiled budgets, and wrote mission statements. And these are all, just as Ms. Allen said, it's all very student-led, and it was very hard for me to remember that sometimes and to kind of take that backseat and let their ideas roll off of me. My philosophy is that if I expect students to learn, then I need to learn from them as well. We wanted to use the past of our team to elevate the present and then to look into the future, so we poured over marketing notes, the notes from judges' past, threw out some ideas, kept some things, and we kept working hard, even past the creative fun process, to the part where you are running through the presentation 10 times in a row. And I was very excited and very welcomed into this team and was very happy to have a part of it. And I would like to say, I told you we were going to Auburn. We have Mr. Mike Chavis as our last mentor.
Hello, this is a chance for me to kind of express the excitement that I feel every year that robotics rolls around. Dr. Bird asked me to help with the robotics program three years ago after my daughter and I built a bridge for a project that was supposed to resist earthquake forces. And I believe that our, that our bridge broke the testing device. And she said, "Hmm, maybe, maybe you should help out with the robotics program." I said, "I think I can do that." And so, we did, I started with the robotics program. I have somewhat of a missionary heart and I like to give the things that I've learned and share the things that I've learned, especially to students. And this program, the one thing that I want to say about this program, it is the most exciting, enriching, and dynamic program that we have in the school system that I know of. It takes elements of art, music, social interaction, math, science, and puts it all together. And I've, I'm proud to be a part of this program. The other thing that this program does is it, it gives a place for nonlinear thinkers to hone their skills. A lot of nonlinear thinkers don't do well in school or other programs because of the way that they think. They come up with ideas, but they don't know how they come up with the ideas, and they don't know how to apply them. This program allows them to freely come up with those ideas in a non-threatening atmosphere and for, it allows the other students to see what's going on in that student's mind and then to help them bridge the gap from, you know, from that how and why. It helps them to learn how and why they're doing things. The program, also, the reason that I'm involved in it and the reason I think that the mentorship, the community mentorship is important, is because it does show alternative pathways to knowledge. Not just a school setting, but the things that they learn in school, they can apply other places, and the things that they learn from other places, they can apply back to school. So I'm very proud, very happy to be associated with this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, now, Mary has been involved with this for many, many years, and Beth, thank you very much for coming on board. Stacy has been involved forever, that I'm aware of, but it's really...
Mary came on...
Right after that, yeah. I knew that she had been here the whole time that I'd been here. But it's really something to see them compete, and I didn't get to go to Auburn, but I certainly a senior at Lipscomb. And it is, it is like, it's like a sports venue, really. I mean, the excitement that's in the air, so thank you all so much for your support of this program.
Any questions?
No, I just had to come.
Come in, fine.
I just want to thank you all for the hard work, Dr. Bird and all the mentors and the kids, because, you know, to me, this shows the amazing opportunities that Murfreesboro City Schools gives the kids, but we couldn't do it without you all and your passion and your dedication and your excitement that you share with the kids. And, you know, to me, that justifies our existence right there, so.
Thank you so much. I'm so proud of y'all. The dedication that the mentors and the children have, I mean, there's, how many kids are involved in this program on a regular basis?
It varies from your year, somewhere between 30 and 45.
It's a huge number of kids doing, playing all different roles, and it's the number of hours that you all volunteer and participate in this is unbelievable, but it's, it's a hands-on experience in applying what Dr. Bird is using in the classroom to something fun, and the kids are having a great time. Thank you all for your, for working with the kids. That means a lot to the kids and to the system. Thank you.
I'm really impressed with those two of you that are not at Discovery School and how you have come back to continuing this program. They do not have a robotics program, I'm assuming, at the high school or the middle school? They do not?
I would say that Olivia has been asked several times to start her robotics team, and I think she just quietly declines.
Your allegiance is to Discovery School Robotics Team, isn't it, Olivia? All right. Thank you very much. Very enlightening, and I appreciate, we all appreciate you being with us tonight. All right, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, again, thank you all. We'd like to congratulate the Teachers of the Year. We have the Individual Teachers of the Year from the schools and then the district-level Teachers of the Year. From Black Fox, we have Meredith Patrum and Kim Markajak. From Northfield, we have Lori Hollis and Tammy Sutton. From John Pittard, Alicia Herbison and Bethany Jackson. From Hobgood, Martin Ridgely and Amanda Counts. From Casey Lane, Angela Pitts and Amy Miller. From Scales, Richard Alexander and Lynn Watson. From Overall Creek, Ben White and Rebecca Sublet. From Mitchell Nelson, Denise Crumball and Allison Murphy. From Reese Rogers, Susan Heiser, Noelle Koenig. From Bradley, Jessica Peterson, Kelly Jones. From Erma Segal, Jill Taylor, Tracy Harris. And from Discovery School, Shay Payne and Melissa Carnes. And the District Teachers of the Year are from Reese Rogers, Dr. Susan Heiser, who is the physical education teacher there, and from Hobgood, Martin Ridgely, who is a first-grade teacher. And they will be moving on to regional competition and then to state competition. So we congratulate all those Teachers of the Year. When you look at this group of teachers, they really are amazing, and they represent Murfreesboro City well. And again, what we know as the defining factor in education is that teacher in that classroom. And so when you look at these teachers and what they do for children every day, and the fact that they are representative of so many of our teachers is really remarkable, so we do congratulate them. Community Outreach would like to thank Coach Whit Turnbull and the MTSU community. Again, this year, they have provided winter coats for our students. And in addition, this year, they collected funds in the amount of $1,250 to the Indigent Children's Fund. So we really appreciate that work and what an amazing contribution that has been over the last couple of years to our system and also to Rutherford County Schools.
I think it's good to, excuse me, to recognize Whit Turnbull and really how this project got started, what, a year ago now? This is the second, we're in the second year of it. And he is to be commended for seeing that young student on the street without a coat and then taking it from there.
That's right. Mitchell Nelson would like to thank James and Amy Fair for their donation to the Archery Club. That club is part of their Leader in Me Clubs that they have at Mitchell Nelson, and those are your communication items.
All right. Thank you, ma'am, very much. Consent items? Have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
May I thank you, Mr. King? Second?
I made an addendum earlier today. Was that included in what?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Second.
Do I have a second?
I have one other addendum as well.
All right. Okay.
So do you need a second?
Do I need, I need to get a second before we discuss the addendums, correct? Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, discussion. The addendums?
Ms., Ms., I'm sorry. Do you have an addendum or are you... Um, no, actually, it's relevant. In our conversation about transportation on the Discovery School, I noted that Discovery School is part of Murfreesboro City Schools and should be treated as such. And I added, put that back into the minutes.
Yes, I have your email now if you want me to read it.
That's, it's essentially, it's fine, it's the same.
And my addendum was also related to that topic, and it was just that I said that the next time it was discussed, it should be discussed on the air, so people have easier access. And, and I think Ms. Price always has all this stuff, it's just that she has to edit and to get it all into a reasonable amount of minutes, so.
Yes.
That's, that's what it is. She has to, a lot of work to do there.
Both of those were given to me so I can, I'll go back to my notes and put them in the appropriate places.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you very much. Okay, action items?
Action items, I'm actually going to give the first four action items to Mr. Anderson. They deal with the capital improvement plan, the approval of architectural services, and the school nutrition budget, and also the auditor contract.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Good evening, board members. The first item for your consideration is the capital improvement plan for facilities. Every year, the city council meets and goes over what their capital improvement plan will be, and it's basically a five-year plan. It is a fluid document that changes based on the needs as we go through each year. What we're proposing is to have an addition added to Hobgood for another 10 classrooms that would handle approximately 200 more students, a new gymnasium with the capacity to handle crowds similar to Overall Creek, music rooms, public restrooms, additional parking, et cetera. We have put at your place tonight, the proposal so far is to what it would look like. This would be on the, on the, what I would call the backside of the school from where the front is at this time, and you can look at that plan. But that's, that's the first item in year one. It is an estimated cost of $6,162,762 for construction, plus, of course, there'll be some additional costs when we put classroom furniture in. But that is the first item in year one. The second item in year one is for Bradley, for the restrooms, dining room, and classroom renovations. The facility, when they host basketball games or even during lunchtime for the students, there's only one restroom, just one restroom, and just has one stall in that one restroom. It's, the men and women have to share that, and boys and girls. And we're asking for renovations to make it a real public restroom facility for that end of the building. We're also asking for, the original blueprint of the building had where the stage area now goes between the cafeteria and the gymnasium, it had a, what's called a knockout wall on the side of the cafeteria. It was designed originally with that wall not being there. After meeting with the architect and going through this plan, we can expand the dining room for 42 additional students by allowing that area to be opened back up for the students in the cafeteria. Also provides us with opportunities for students to make presentations and things, because they'll be lift, be above stage height. We've talked with the architect. He says this is very feasible to do, and he is meeting with the engineers and others to make sure it can work for us. But that is what we would like to propose for year one as well, to help that school. There would also be some classroom renovations to reallocate some spaces, to handle the way schools are used today. Back when the school was built, obviously, it's not the same as schools are used today. So we are asking for that, and the total renovation package on that would be $343,140. Year two...
Can we stop? Because I'm going to lose my questions.
Sure.
Can we stop?
You sure can. Ask your question.
Okay, going back to the first one, the expansion at Hobgood?
Yes, ma'am.
A couple... A couple, I was wondering if you would review for me and for the folks at home. How many years ago was it that we did the expansion at Hobgood?
Okay, two years ago, we added to the front, actually, a year and a half now, we added to the front of the building where we expanded the library, the dining room, the cafeteria, the office areas, the nursing area, and basically the front of the school, which expanded the ability of the school to take additional capacity. The year before that, we added four classrooms for first grade, and we converted some other classrooms to have, make, that was the library a year and a half ago, was the library, we converted that to two classrooms. What has happened since then, that school, every time we add classrooms, that school fills them up right away. So we don't have a music, dedicated music room, we don't have any additional storage, we've, we've taken up storage rooms, so that, that's what we're doing. By adding in 200 students, the core capacity was designed to handle that many when we added on to the school before. This was, in our original plan, this was phase three of the plan. This basically is saying, this is as big as this school can get. And so this is, this is what that proposal's about.
And, and the funding, you all have talked to City Hall about the funding, I understand.
Yes.
Okay.
The city council, we're going to ask you if you approve these, this capital outlay plan. The city council, to get the thing started, we had to kind of go in a little reverse order. We presented to the city council for the architect fees to get started and design this. They have already approved that. So we're going to ask you for the same approval here, if, if you're okay with these other plans. Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
The, the, my next question has to do with Bradley, so if anybody else has Hobgood questions.
Let's see what we do about Hobgood first.
A simple Hobgood question right now, we're at 450 students. What would, what are we estimating this would put us at?
We can go to 650 to 700, depending on if they come in lower grades or the upper grades.
Okay.
The other thing this will do is, if you look at this, the gym size at Hobgood, the current gym, just is not sufficient. And right now, we do not have a large gym in the central part of the city. So we see this as, with the gym expansion here that we're proposing, we see this really is able to handle several events that other schools might be interested in using that gym, so that it wouldn't just be restricted to Hobgood. But we need an area in, in the central part of town that has a gym this size. Plus, this gym for the size, for the number of students we're wanting, makes sense.
Mr. Barrett, I'm sorry. King, you finish?
I was just going to say, at, at the numbers that, that Mr. Anderson is saying, I mean, that puts us almost the size of a Black Fox and a Casin Lane. I mean, I, I think this is a great idea, very simply put, for Hobgood, to get us up to that size that quick.
Right. And we need that.
Yeah.
Mr. Barrett?
And we discussed this at the last meeting about the old gym, there's plans to either renovate, turn it into classroom space or some sort of other space other than a gym, so there's no two gyms.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at that, right.
Okay.
Right. That, that is the one part of this that's not finalized, and it's something I think we want to take time to, to look at it, but in other, in, for us to roll this out in '16, '17, which is what we would need, we need to go ahead and move, and that's the reason we went to council and asked about the architectural fees and, and the design fees to go ahead and be able to, to get to work on this. Because if we, if we start working on it now, we are looking at, being July of 2016, to have this completed, right?
Right.
If we're, if.
The schedule of completion dates July 1st, to give us some grace period in there for rain, snow, whatever.
Don't mention that word.
Grace period in there.
Thank you.
Ms. Watson, do you have any comment that you need, would like to make pertaining to this?
We'll vote.
Thank you. Okay.
I think.
The, the gym at Bradley is the same as it was?
When we were there.
We, we looked at that. A lot.
When we were there?
You and I both.
But you was a student.
I was.
There you go. Okay. Ms. Smith?
Can you remind us why you, I mean, why you chose Hobgood and Black Fox to build on to when I believe that there's another school that has more property?
Right. If I can take you down the east side of the city, starting at Pittard as the top. Pittard has, we, when we rezoned, we took over 200 students out of that school. That school filled itself back up this year. That has geothermal fields around it, so we cannot add to that school at all. And it's a thousand-capacity school, we wouldn't, probably wouldn't do that anyhow. Come down to the next school as you, as you continue down the, the east side, and you have Reeves Rogers. Reeves Rogers has more land. The problem with it is it has no access other than on to Greenland. There's no other way out of that campus. If we put more cars and more things, we're making that ingress and egress even worse. Plus, it falls off, the land falls off so quickly on the back of the school that we would have to spend, I would estimate, between a half a million and $750,000 in fill material just to get it up to the right level of what the school would be. We also have there one serving line in the cafeteria. One serving line means it limits how many kids we can get through the dining room fast enough, because we feed one class every five minutes. So that's the reason, that school, we felt we could not do anything more with that school at this time. As you come down Hobgood, the next one down, it is, it has the land, it has the ability to add on to it, and it has the need for us to add on those particular things that we're adding, gymnasium, additional classrooms, additional music room, and it needs parking as well, desperately. So that's the reason there. And the next one, and when we get to year two, when we get to that one, we're adding to Black Fox as well. We've experienced tremendous growth, and not in new construction, but tremendous growth on the east side of the city of people moving into existing inventory and filling up our schools very rapidly. So that's why we, we, we're going to be proposing it that way.
What about Mitchell Nelson?
Mitchell Nelson, we, the dining room at Mitchell Nelson is, is fair, I'm talking about Mitchell Nelson Elementary now. The dining room there is, is fairly small. We, that school is filled as well right now. But right next to that is Northfield, that has currently capacity to handle some additional students. So we didn't feel the push was as, as urgent in that, in that part. But if you add on to Mitchell Nelson Elementary, you have to add other facilities now to go with it, because the core facility won't handle it now.
Excellent. Makes sense to me. I just wanted to see what the thought process was.
Ms. Phillips?
Tagging on to that and then going back to my next question's about Bradley. You know, we were talking about expanding, and, and I didn't see it, maybe I overlooked it, but we're talking about how Pittard and Scales and Mitchell Nelson are all at capacity. Is that, is that correct?
Scale still has some, some room, because when we built, when we built Overall Creek, it gave us extra capacity.
I'm sorry, I said Scales. I didn't, I meant Irma Segal. I'm sorry, I meant Irma Segal.
Irma Segal has some room as well right now, but you have the new apartments coming in there and some new construction north of there.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, I was just thinking, you know, Northfield has room, and if those, you know, I mean, it also has room to expand, and it has a two-line cafeteria, does it not?
Yes, Northfield's basically the same era as Black Fox was built, and there is the potential there, we think, to expand, because the core facility can handle it. And that will be the next school we'll look at as far as expanding and, and making the actual classroom capacity larger. But that's the next one we would go to.
My last questions have to do with Bradley. Thank you for bearing with us, Mr. Anderson.
Sure.
I am a little bit concerned. Explain to me about the knocking out the wall of the theater. Now, remember, this theater troupe has just brought home all kinds of accolades with their amazing work, and if, if you knock out the wall, won't that very severely limit the use of the theater for classes?
And, Mr. Anderson, you may want Dr. Fowler to, because she has certainly walked with us.
Sure. I'll explain to the construction part of it. It actually will enhance the program, because we would have a curtain that would close on the back, so if you had productions going on out in the gymnasium area, you will still have access to that stage. What it does is enhances the seating capacity, enhances the ability of the students to do some actual performances during lunch for the cafeteria side for the kids. It handles 42 additional students, and the curtains that would be there would be, we're looking at more soundproof curtains on the gymnasium side. So really, we're looking at enhancing the ability to use that space and not limiting it. So that's from the construction part.
I have to say, I've never seen a curtain that can knock out the noise of a, of a cafeteria, kids' cafeteria. I mean, theater's my thing too, so, you know.
It'll be in the gymnasium, so they're going to be competing for noise.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't know. I have concerns. What do you, what can you tell us, Dr. Fowler?
Yeah, well, the idea that Gary proposed, first, I want to thank you for even considering an expansion at Bradley, because we do, we are, we really need some public restrooms in the rest, in the gym area, and our cafeteria, we start eating at 10:45, and we're still eating at 1:15, so we have about a three-hour lunch period, due to just the increase in enrollment that we've had in our school. But the idea with knocking out the wall would give us a lot more flexibility with the space. Right now, where the gym, the gym and the stage kind of, all of it backs into each other, but it, by knocking out that wall, and it, it's not that big of a process, we would be able to use that space for some additional cafeteria seating. We could also open it up to do a theater and a round kind of activity, because it would be open on both sides, so you could do, where you could have a smaller intimate types of activities. And our drama room, where the kids practice.
That glass wall room you're talking about?
Yes, they have a stage, and that's where they typically practice, because they're near where the music information is. And, and right now, they're doing the production, of course, at the Center for the Arts, which is a wonderful partnership with us, and we get a lot of community support that way. So by opening that space up, and we have assemblies, we can do some different things.
So it's not going to limit your theater classes in any way?
No, ma'am. It would not. It would expand the cafeteria, it's probably going to impact my PE program a little bit, just because they would be closer together. But it also gives us a little bit more flexibility for band, because right now, I've got band in the cafeteria in the morning, like most of the other schools. So, you know, there, there's some opportunity there. The band would be able to, like, practice on the stage.
Uh huh, uh huh.
And that, that would be beneficial to them when we, we're, we're getting ready for performances.
Right.
But it would make, our cafeteria now is kind of like a straight shot. Many of you have been in there and know, and it's a very difficult to supervise, too, because of the length of it. So by expanding it this way a little bit, even if that's just 42 more seats, it's a little bit more of an intimate setting and would help with supervision.
Okay, sounds good.
Does that help?
Yeah, sure does.
Okay. Ms. Anderson, continue.
Okay. Year two, we're looking at having the Black Fox addition of 10 additional classrooms. In, in that particular school, the core facility, it was built for 1,000. It was built when the, when the state had a 25-to-1 pupil teacher ratio recommendation, and now we're at 20-to-1. And so when you do that, you obviously reduce your capacity of your school by 20% by dropping that number of students. So we, we are going to be adding that capacity back just by adding the classrooms, because as I, as I stated, the core was built for 1,000 students. Cafeteria is, the gymnasium is, and the library is, and that's basically your core. And so that, that should handle, handle that additional growth on that side of the city for right now, which would give us 400 more student capacity within two years. So that's, that was year two. Year three, any questions about that particular one?
Originally, I think we had discussed about the expansion at Black Fox going out to the, the west side, going toward the shopping center.
Right.
And now we're looking at going back over on the wi, the west, the east side, going toward Kensington Drive. Am I correct?
The preliminary design, and right now, because we haven't done it, we're just looking at some, some sketch work, is to add four classrooms going out that way towards the shopping center, a little bit into the parking lot there.
Okay.
And six classrooms on the other side towards Kensington.
Okay.
And adding, where we would have to steal some of the parking to come out on the side where the forest, but adding in the front where the, where the big parking lot is, adding another row of parking there to build your parking back up.
Okay.
Because you're going to need more, anytime you add 10 more classrooms, you've got to have more parking for more, more staff.
True.
So that is that one. The estimated cost on that one is, is $2,548, $49,000. That is a really good, I'll say bang for your buck on that one, because you're adding 200 students at that cost.
Okay.
Year three is looking at, we feel we're going to need a new school by that time in year three, based on the city's 2035 plan. And estimated cost on that is 20, 20 million plus. We're a little far out to be able to tell what the construction market's going to be doing then. We're estimating it would be between 20 and 20, 22 million, and also the price of land and where we end up putting it. We do not know yet exactly where, because the growth of the city right now is coming west, and it's also coming out to the southeast, and we got some going north. So we're kind of waiting to see which one grows out the fastest. Even though there's almost 800 approved lots already, we don't know which is going to build out fastest. So we've got to wait and see what that is. We also need to see, when apartment buildings go up, they tend to go up, they can go up faster as far as the number of people per the amount of time. So we need to see where all that lands.
Are you identifying properties? I'm sorry.
We have been told of certain properties that are available, so we haven't really, because until we can land on where we think it's going to be, we really are not determining yet where to go. But we did it through three years, because we're waiting for the final 2035 plan to come in, to go further, and since it's a fluid document, it changes every year anyhow. So we were comfortable in presenting the first three years of this, and if, if you approve of, of this concept plan, then we would take this to the city council for them to put and put as placeholders on their CIP, which is their capital improvement plan for the next three years.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Mr. King?
Just kind of a simple question on, on the new school. When you say year three, are we looking at 2018 that we might start construction? When it says year number three, do you see what my thinking is?
Where, yes, sir. We're thinking that, that year one would, things would open in 2016, year two would be 2017, year three will be open in 2018.
Okay, so August of 2018, it's possible we could be opening a brand-new school.
It could be.
But it could be moved back to August 2017.
It could, it could move either way, and the same thing with the Black Fox addition. If we see next year, all of a sudden, we get a.
Influx.
A whole influx.
We might have to move that up.
Move it up a year. And, and we talked with, with the city manager about that, so he knows that, that it's fluid.
Yes, but the earliest would be 2018 for a new school. Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? All right, do you need a motion in order for you to take this forward?
Actually, I have a question.
I'm sorry.
That's fine. Can you give us a little bit about the financials, about how one pays for all this? I mean, we, we, so we approved it to, for the architectural, to pay for the architectural fees, then the, but the city pays for the buildings.
Yes, and actually, the city pays for the construction and the architectural fees. They pay for the whole thing. What we're approving is, for us, and like I said, the city council already approved the money, they're paying for the architectural fees, but we have to approve it as well, the board does, to go forward with it. We don't pay for new school construction, the city pays for that.
But then, what we need to think about is that we have, because we have new spaces, new classrooms, we have more, we will have more expenses off our budget as well.
Exactly right. What hap, this, the money we're asking here is what, what's considered capital outlay money. The other's operating money. And so when we open up new schools, new facilities, it does increase our operating costs.
Yeah.
And that's out of our general purpose budget and operations. So yes, you're right.
Which we were kind of bitten this past year, because we opened a new school and didn't have a different amount of money. So I, I want us to really be thinking about, about the operating expenses that go along with these.
Bigger.
Bigger, these facilities that we have to build.
Exactly.
Or add on to.
Exactly correct.
So you are asking for approval of the capital improvement plan and then also approval of the architectural services, right?
That'll be the next one. I was going to try to keep separate, separate votes.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the, the capital improvement plan?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. King, thank you. All right, we've had plenty of discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. All right, Mr. Anderson?
Okay, the, the next item is approval of the architectural fees with Johnson and Bailey not to exceed $300,000. And that's for engineering, design, and field testing. We're looking at the new addition having geothermal in it, except for the gymnasium, which is traditionally a bigger unit that sits on, on their, on their roof. But we're looking at geothermal. So we are asking for the engineering fees now. This was presented to city council. They have already approved it. And I'm sorry, it's out of sequence on this, but we had to get moving on it to meet the timeline to get it open by 2016. Yep. So we're asking for a motion to approve the, the contract with Johnson and Bailey for these services not to exceed $300,000.
Thank you, sir. All right, do we have a motion as such?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Is it second?
Second.
Ms. Phillips, thank you. Any discussion?
So, so once you use the geothermal on the site, then there's no more adding on?
Well, we don't think we can add any more to that facility anyhow because of the capacity of the core facility then. So we would pretty much say that's it anyhow for that school. Geothermal, what they're looking at is, is the possibility of individual classroom geothermal units versus big fields of geothermal. So that's part of the engineering that we've got to find out.
Mr. Barrett?
So the individual classroom, is that more expensive than the overall field that they usually do like we did for overall, or is it?
That's part of what they're trying to run through engineering to see what the possibility is.
Okay.
Mr. King? Would the geothermal be for the new portion or the entire school?
Just the new portion. Because we put variable refrigerant flow units on that school two years ago, which were brand-new energy efficient. It's kind of like if you're ranking energy efficiency, that's like geothermal is number one, variable refrigerant flow is basically number two.
Ms. Phillips?
What would be the advantage of doing it classroom by classroom as opposed to the whole area?
That, I asked the architect that and the engineer, and what they say is the individual units then stand alone. So if one breaks, if one unit breaks down, it doesn't cover a whole wing, it's covering school, classroom by classroom by classroom. So that, that's one of the things. In our variable refrigerant flow system, one unit handles four to six classrooms. So if one unit goes down, you've lost the heating or air conditioning in four to six classrooms. So that's kind of the way they're looking at it. What is, is the offsetting cost worth that? We don't know yet.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know how often that sort of thing happens because you can make a better judgment than whether it's worth the cost investment.
And that's a great question. And geothermal, really we're looking at pumps that go down. And we had a pump go down over at Pittard, but it's a pump. And we could replace it quickly and, and pretty efficiently. The other units, the variable refrigerant flow is a little more, a little more critical. And they sit on the roofs of our schools. And personally, I don't like to put equipment on roofs because then you have issues of leaks and things. I prefer it to be underground. So that's what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Hey, thank you. The next item is, if you remember, typically we would bring to you budget amendments at the end of the year. It's a big clearinghouse. City camp, the city finance office, based on their auditor's recommendations, asked us to bring these sooner when we know they're coming about. Your original budget had the cafeteria and food service. We did not approve the budget at the time as a community eligibility program because we didn't know if we were going to be approved by the USDA. So we had to approve it the other way. Well, we were approved, as you know, for community eligibility. And the difference in revenue that it brings into the school system is $1,190,637. And then we have the offsetting expenditures of the same amount. This is basically an in and out. It's just a matter of getting our budget numbers to where they fit. You can exceed your budget. You can, you can have less expenditures, but you can't exceed it. So we have to approve this to get it in our budget so we do not exceed that number. And again, it's just a matter of rather than doing it the end of the year, the city asked us to do it as we go, when we know about it. So this was one that jumps off the page at us because the program we originally approved was changed when the USDA allowed us to go community eligibility.
Ms. Phillips?
Would you share with the folks at home what that means to be part of the community eligibility program?
Certainly.
Easy for you to say.
The community eligibility program was, was made available by, by the US Department of Agriculture. It was piloted in other states and became available for Tennessee this year. What it means to us is that our students, every student can get a lunch and a breakfast without cost to the student. And as you can see, the money flows through the USDA and flows through the state to us. So it makes it available so that our students do not have to, have to buy their meals no matter of what their eligibility status is.
Thank you. I always think it's important to get that out there.
Yes ma'am, thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Now, we're, what we're doing is asking for you to approve this so we can just adjust our budget numbers the same. It's money in, money out.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Second?
Second.
Mr. Barrett, thank you. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right, Mr. Anderson?
Okay, the next item is the auditor contract approval. Last year you asked us to consider looking at other audit firms based on some information you had received at one of the conferences about the possibility of changing a firm. The current firm we have now has served the district very well for 10 years. So we went out and did a request for proposal. We sent it out to, I think it was a dozen different companies that wanted, that expressed somewhat of an interest in it. And we received five back, five proposals. I included for you in your, in your, in your notes there, the companies that bid, the amount that they bid. The finance department went through the bid documents. There's, we would recommend three of the five for your consideration. I'll be glad to discuss any of them with you that you'd like, but I guess I'll just hit the high points if that's all right with you. Matlock Clements, they had a fixed fee of $45,000 for the audit services for three years in a row. So it's the same rate. And they have no additional fees for any other services. That's all-inclusive. In that, they currently have eight school clients in Tennessee. Crossland Associates, our current provider, they broke theirs up into two different categories. They bid 42,000 the first year, and then you can see incrementally it increased. But they added $6,000 for statement preparation. As I said earlier, the Matlock Clements, that's already included in the price. We, we contacted them just to make sure. And so their first year would be 48,000. They have 16 school clients in Tennessee. The next two firms, the, the next one, KBMD, they had a lower bid amount, and it was also inclusive, but they have no school, current school clients in Tennessee. They did have an agent or two that worked with them that had worked on school bids, but they, as a company, they had none. So we, as the finance office, did not recommend them to you because of that. The next one, Elliott Davis and DeCosimo, I guess, is the way you pronounce that. They had a fee of 50,000 per year for three years. But they also included an hourly rate if it's above required. Now, the possibility of above required is if, typically they have to audit two subcontracts, meaning if you get federal money and they're required to audit three, then they're going to charge you that much per hour to audit the extra one. They have, and I'm sorry that line got out of, like, they have 27 client, school clients, but two, all of them are out of state except for two. And the two they have in-state are individual schools. They're not school districts. So they had the highest bid amount. And because of that, and, and the additional cost per hour, we wouldn't, we didn't feel that was in the best interest for the district to go that route either. The last one for consideration that's submitted was Patterson, Hardy, and Ballantyne. And they were at 45,000. And they also had additional fees per hour for, for additional services. And they have three school clients. Basically, in our analysis of the bids from the finance department, Matlock Clements, Crossland Associates, and Patterson, Hardy, and Ballantyne were the three that we could recommend to you and say, we're fine anyway, any route you want to take on those. So basically, it's, it's up to the board now to decide which, which of these clients that you would like us to go with to do your audit. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you have on these.
Chairman?
Any of them local?
Yes, sir. Matlock Clements is, is a company in Murfreesboro. Crossland Associates is out of Davidson County. And Patterson, Hardy is out of Williamson County.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
That was.
That was your question? Okay. Do we have other questions, Ms. Phillips?
Do you have a recommendation? Or preference?
We can go either way as far as, for us, as far as making adjustments. Of course, staying with what we have now is easiest. But we're fine any way you go because an audit to us is an audit. It's just a matter of, everyone has a different way they do it, but they end up with the same results. So we're fine either way you want to go.
One follow-up question, please. With Crossland Associates, how much of an increase is this over what we paid last year?
We budgeted $60,000 for the audit. And I think it's going to end up being like at 56 is what it's going to end up being at this year.
So this is really, would be, at least for the first year, it would be less than?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be less.
Than what we paid this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I guess part, I'm sorry, Ms. Smith?
I didn't know if we, do we need to make a motion for the?
Yeah.
So I would like to move that we accept the offer from Matlock Clements.
All right.
I'll second.
I would second from Mr. Barrett. Now, any other discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Phillips?
The school systems that Matlock and Clements handle, what size school systems are they?
They have, they do Franklin Special School District, totally like they would do ours. County school systems have the state auditors come in. So typically what, what those county school systems do is they have to hire another audit firm to do their school nutrition program and to do extended school and to do their school-based accounting.
Uh huh.
So they have all, they have Rutherford County where they do that. They do Williamson Counties, Suquatche County. I haven't actually heard from me to actually look up the other ones.
That's all right, that's all right. I just wanted to make sure they used, they, they did comparable size.
Oh yeah.
Because we have so many very small systems in the state. I wanted to make very.
Yes. The one closest to what we are would be Franklin Special School District because they're going to do the same type audit for them as they do for us.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
Just curious on the years of experience of these two. I think Crossland, I was looking at their websites today. I think Crossland's been in business at least 25 years, but I cannot remember about the Matlock, Matlock and, Matlock Clements. I can't remember. It's basically a two or three-person firm. And Crossland's 10 to 12. I could be wrong, but it looked like there were 10 to 12 people in the photograph.
If, if we're looking at, well, Gary's looking that up. But if we're, if we're looking at, at the bids, and of course, we don't have to take the lowest bid. But if you look at Matlock Clements, for three years running, it's the same price. And that includes everything. If you look at Crossland, you're starting out a little bit lower, but you've got that additional cost which bumped it up for all three years. So you're going from, you know, 48 to 49.
It's a $15,000 difference.
Yeah. So it'll be, yeah.
I have that information.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, thank you.
They have 12 years' experience with their, with their lead.
That's Matlock?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And of their business total, 34% of their total business is based on school business. 34%. And just the list of clients, Franklin Special, Williamson County, Rutherford County, Manchester City Schools, Robertson County, Lawrence County, Mary County, and Suquatche County.
Okay.
I'm not a bullpenta, but it's always good to break it up sometimes. And, and they are, they have a firm, look the background they have, you know? You're not going to go wrong.
And look at the money. I hate to say it, it's, it's a no-brainer. They're local, and they've, they've got a track record. And it's always good to break it up sometimes. You can always go back to Crossland, you know, somewhere down the road if you want to. But they may find something that maybe Crossland overlook.
Sure.
An audit is an audit, period.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Correct and a second? All right, and that motion is to accept the bid from Matlock Clements as our auditors. All right, call for vote. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes, or, yeah, yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And Sher Campbell?
Yes, ma'am. Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Barrett and acknowledge him because he brought that idea and that's information back from one of the, what was it you had attended?
NSBA conference.
And, and this is what's so important is we get ideas and, you know, inspiration about trying new things. And this is going to save us money. And, and I just wanted to acknowledge his contribution. But also, is there any way that we can send a very gracious thank you note for all the last 10 years' service to Crossland?
We'll be glad to send something from our department. And if you'd like to send something from the board, that would be great to do.
10 years of service. And they, and, and also in the contract with Matlock Clements, I always appreciated the Crossland Associates come in giving us a public review of our audit to let the public know that we always had a clean audit. I think that's very important. And so if we could have that, make sure that's in the contract, that would be great. Thank you.
They all do that.
Well, just in case. I'm, I don't, I'm not that, with that many audits, so just want to make sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
We're glad to hear you have to meet audits.
Yeah. All right, next item, Mr. Anderson?
That one's actually Dr. Gilman.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. As you know, we have a preschool coordinator who has been coordinating our preschool registration, placement, movement, when we needed to move, making sure that we are legal as far as our rules and regulations, offering professional development. And that contract has been a total of $9,975. I'm asking to extend that up to that amount again to finish out the year. We are facing preschool registration. We're facing placement and acceptance of students, placing classrooms. So very similar to the same kinds of things we had last year. So I am requesting that the board does approve that we go ahead and extend that contract for up to an additional $9,975 so that we can get through June.
All right, do we have a motion to accept that? And then we'll have discussion.
So moved. I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
I'll second.
Mr. King, second. All right, down, discussion. I saw Ms. Smith, then I saw Ms. Phillips and Mr. Barrett.
I, I, I've heard Ms. Smith is very talented. I don't recall this coming before the board would.
There's actually a line item in the budget for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, which, in anything over 10,000, I have to come back to the board for. So when you look at the line item, it has $10,000 in that line item. What I'm asking to do is increase that by, up to an additional 9, 975, which is what actually the contract is amounted to.
I understand there had to be a lot of hard decisions that were made with the dismantling[1646.76] I understand there had to be a lot of hard decisions that were made with the dismantling of Bellwood. Um, that, I feel like this should've been communicated to us when this happened. It may have been and I missed it, I, I may have missed it.
As far as the contract?
I did not know that we were gonna have a preschool coordinator.
Yes, ma'am.
In, in our conversations, we, there were lots of questions about if we were gonna have a preschool coordinator and it was kind of.
And I'm sorry if that's the case, there is a line item that you all approved that we discussed, um, and I'll be happy to go back and get those minutes for you and send them to you.
So we did go, we did talk about it?
Yes, uh-huh.
Wasn't, wasn't the $10,000 item?
Right.
I, I, I remember talking, it was gonna be for.
After the budget process, I don't.
No, it was, no, it was during the budget process.
During the budget, I, I discussed it.
My understanding was that she was, oh, I'm sorry.
Let, let me get some order here, okay? Ms. Smith, Mr. Barrett, I think was next.
I'm sorry, I, I totally missed, missed the vote on that because I, I just remember it kinda being up in the air for a while about if there was gonna be a preschool coordinator.
I think, I tried to be clear from the very beginning that there, there would be a coordinator, uh, but it would not be a full-time position.
I see.
I think wasn't it more on a, a consultant?
It is, it's an hourly basis.
And it was not called a preschool coordinator. It was, it was as a consultant.
Do you remember what the?
Pardon?
It's actually in, do you have your budget?
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, I, I don't think, I think it has to be done, I just don't remember it coming through.
No, I'd, I'd, I'd like to find that, if you could, please.
All right, Mr. Barrett, you have a question?
I believe Ms. Phillips, no, it was me.
Okay.
I don't care.
Okay, Mr. Barrett?
Okay. What are the plans going forward? I know this is, we're doing this part by part, but going into our budgeting.
I, I plan to have a similar position.
Okay.
I do not see that as a full-time position.
Okay.
Um, so you're not dealing with benefits, you're not dealing with anything except just the hours that are worked.
Okay.
Whenever, whenever you have there, whenever you have the applications, um, what you get involved with that too is you have two different fundings. So you have funding that's a voluntary pre-K, which has rules and regulations as far as admittance, so you're looking at looking really at socioeconomic and ranking those children. When you look at title, you're looking at a whole different set of rules. So you're, you're testing those children and finding those that are most needy, really irrelevant of socioeconomic. So part of that has to do with that too, just the whole admissions.
Ms. Anderson, quick.
Yeah, it does, I think.
Okay.
My understanding was that it was a consultant's position and, I, you know, I'm, I, and I'm not trying to put you on the hot seat, Dr. Gilbert.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. You know, I'm curious that, about, um, we have fewer preschool classrooms now. Is that correct, two fewer?
Yes.
We have two fewer classrooms. Why, uh, you didn't think, I mean, she's already put in a certain amount of hours?
Right.
Um, and what took up the bulk of those hours?
Okay, when you look at, well, part of it was, we had to find placement for those preschools. So when you're looking at, she was coordinating with the principals, she was meeting with them, she was finding placement, she was helping with the, the move, but also she was having to spend, uh, when you look at that application process, you're getting applications from all over the city. And so you're sifting through those, those applications and determining who qualifies, who does not qualify. You're contacting, she did the contacting of the parents to let them know they had been accepted or they're not accepted. She did the contacting of the parents as far as letting them know where, where they would be placed. She does all of the, she coordinates the staff development, so on the half-day, she's working with that. So just, just the application process, acceptance process, monitoring that, keeping, keeping up with the absences so that if a, a student, um, by state law, you can only have a certain number of absences, those preschools, particularly the voluntary preschools, have to stay full. So, part of it has to do with just communicating with parents. The other thing you'll find is, and I know it's Dr. Lloyd in the, in the audience, but she coordinates with him as far as the rules and regulations, what they can have in the classrooms, what kind of furniture also works with, with the, uh, curriculum. So she really is a liaison between the preschools, the state, and, and the principals. So basically, um, she is the person that makes sure that we're legal and makes sure that, that students are where they need to be according to the rules and regs that are the requirements for the acceptance.
And there are, there's, um, no, I know she's retired from our system originally. Is that correct?
Right.
Is there no one within the system currently who can do those things?
Not that would have, I don't think that would have her knowledge and I certainly don't think that would have the time.
All right, Ms. Anderson, what'd you find?
Uh, in the budget, the, the board approved under, uh, it's a line item 399, which is other contracted services, and it was for $10,000, early childhood consultant is how it was titled.
Okay.
Does she have any clerical help at all?
No.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? We have, Ms. King?
Uh, the original agreement was 399 hours. Is that a, um, the 399, is that a rule that that's the maximum any consultant can be?
What, what we went with was keeping it at 10,000.
Okay, okay.
And so when you divide that out hourly, that's where you get that.
That's what you came up with, okay.
Right.
I just didn't know if it was just what was predicted, we thought her, we thought she might need, or if any person or her thing would, that's the maximum length of hours we can do of just learning? Okay.
And one last question.
Ms. Phillips?
Um, I, you expect to put this in the budget, um, again, next year?
Right.
And so do you think you would, I mean, would she, since her not moving and all that, would it require the full?
I'm, I'm gonna talk with her and see. I know that we do have to make decisions about, about placement, um, and in fact, Mr. Anderson and I are visiting the schools right now to, to really see how much placement we have because right now we have a preschool, we have preschools at Northfield, we have preschools at Mitchell Nielsen, at Black Fox, and at Pittard, I believe, is that?
And Scales.
And Scales, that's right. Because we had planned to have, part of it, we had planned to have at least two at Reeves and had to move them mid-July because of the space. So we're looking at space again this year. But I'm hoping that we can get a better guess at how many students we'll have in those schools so we'll know whether we have to shift them.
Mr. Barrett?
Do you anticipate her using up the whole 399 hours?
I have no idea.
You have no idea, okay.
I know we start registration, um, we have registration four Thurs, three, four Thursdays in April. We don't have it the first Thursday, we're gonna do that at central office, but she'll coordinate that.
Okay.
Um, I support this as long as we maintain the position as a consultant and not as coordinator.
I'm fine with that. I, I did not look and that's my fault, I did not look at what the title was in there before doing the memo.
Any other discussions? We have a motion to accept it, to approve it. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
And Chair Campbell?
Yes, ma'am, aye. Now, let me ask, well, that's all right. I'll ask you a question about this after we get through. About, no, not about that position, something. I'm thinking that loud. All right, reports and information.
Okay, reports and information, you have the revenue, the personnel, and the attendance report, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, your revenue report and expenditure report is in there, uh, we are in the black at this point with $983,710 to the good. Uh, last year at this time, we were, we were to the good $1,594,000, but that's because of the technology purchases and, and at the, at the, when all the computers started coming in, our expenditures and our revenue started swapping places because the money came in and money went out. So I just wanna, uh, just point that part out. Uh, as far as, this is the 58.3% of the budget year. On the revenue side, on, on line two, on the revenue side, our, our actual, uh, sales tax is up $323,000. Now, what you don't see here is, we didn't get the sales tax report in until after the close of the month. So if you would take the line, again, it's line two all the way over to year 14, 15 revenue, it, it shows $3,355,000. You have to add another $680,000 to that because it came in a day after the close of the period, so you can't put it in this one, we had to add it. And, and when you do that, it brings it up to a total of 53%, which is above where it was last year at this time at 49%. And that equates to $323,000 more in sales tax revenues. The property tax numbers are down slightly, but remember this, property taxes aren't due in finally until the end of February, so that can, that could easily catch itself up. So, uh, when you add the additional, uh, sales tax monies in, uh, it's 57.8%. Last year at this time, we were at 58.1, but again, the money for the computers, uh, started coming in at that time and you can look at other local revenue, line four from last year, and you see it was 913. That's when we started getting the money from the city to pay for the computers. So it's just kinda the way it balances itself out. On the expenditure side, uh, there's really nothing that jumps off the page at us except for line 19, regular capital outlay this year is up. Part of that's computers, part of that is where we had work that was approved last year that didn't get done until this year. For example, the doors on Mitchell Nielsen and stuff. So it's, like I said, it's a rolling document that keeps, uh, flowing through, but expenditure-wise, we're, we're, we're in good shape from where we, where we were last year. So we're, we feel good on the, uh, on the expenditures and revenues part. Any questions on that? Okay, the personnel report is in there and, uh, if you have any questions on that with Mr. Ringstaff's here this evening? If not, I can go to the pupil teacher ratio and, and enrollment. This sheet is the same as you got last time, and the reason for that is, is that the accounting period for enrollment doesn't, doesn't end until the 26th. So the period doesn't close for another two days. So I couldn't give you any up, any more updated information. I can either email the most current one to you when it comes out, or we can just bring it, include it in the next month's report, either way. Uh, but you can look at from where we are, we're still at a great pupil teacher ratio, attendance is really good, and we're at 8,049 on the, uh, on the total enrollment piece, and that, that is up, as you know, from last year, over 500 students, uh, from where, where we ended the year, so. If anyone has any questions on that. Again, it's the same one you got last month, just the period hasn't closed yet.
Uh, that, that's up over last year, but it's a little bit less than it was last month, correct? Did I read that right?
It's, it's the same, it's the same one as last, as last month, that the 8049's the same. It's for the period ending January 21st is the one that you have here that you're looking at now.
Okay, I was looking at the one after, that we got for the, after winter break.
You got, I see, yes, sir, and that was 8056. So yes, there's a slight drop from that, and we'll have a more current one next time.
Okay.
If you have any other questions, that's, that was the end of the report on that.
All right. We have any other items that need to come before the board tonight? Ms. Smith?
Things, um, that I just jotted down regarding our favorite topic these days, which would be snow. I wanna thank you, um, Dr. Gilbert, for making the call early last week for that we were going to have, uh, school out. It was obvious that we needed to have school out, the road, the conditions were inappropriate for the, for the children to be in school, to be standing outside even on that Friday waiting for buses, but even, you know, my street has just gotten cleared as, as a, not a main thoroughfare. And, uh, I just wanna thank you for going ahead and doing that. I was a little concerned about, um, the children that depend on food at our schools and I read a little bit of that, if you could tell us a little bit what happened to.
Um, and Ashley, if you don't mind, I'd like for Mr. Lyles to come up. Um, it's, it's kinda interesting because, um, even on the days that we don't plan for things and, and we may be out of school, life still happens, and it's really nice to have connections that just sorta automatically provide for our children. So, um, the first inkling I really got that things were happening in the district is I had an email from, uh, Ashley had a phone call from her principal that was talking about a couple of teachers that had made contact with students and then subsequently talked to those teachers. And then, um, I had a question from a board member and so I wrote Mr. Lyles and found out that they were doing what they needed to do. So I'd like for him to talk about that because I think, um, it's really a tribute to our community that there are organizations out there with, which we pair so strongly that, that we can make phone calls and it's just automatic, so. Greg?
First of all, we, with our backpack program, you know, we partner with, uh, Second Harvest Foods out of Nashville. And as Dr. Gilbert said, even on the days we have breaks or long weekends, we put extra food in their bags. And then when we have breaks, we send food to the ESP sites that are open, uh, which are, you know, those bags are available for any student that may need it. Ms., uh, Sandy Shealy and I have already talked and we're looking at a plan just to have some more structure to it that will be in place in the event this happens again. But we also had an offer from Olive Branch Church that if we knew of any kids that needed food, that they were ready and willing to go out and do that with their church vans. And I think also, we had some other community agencies, Green, uh, Greenhouse Ministries and, uh, Dr. Fowler helped them distribute food during that break as well. And I think many of our kids, she said, benefited from that as well, so. Uh, but we do always send food out to the ESP sites that are open when we have breaks.
Thank you, thank you so much. It's, um, yes, we are an education system, but, but our main party is the welfare of our children as a whole, so thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate the board's support. I, I will tell you that this district is pretty unique with the partnerships that we have and with the approach to the whole child, and we could not do that if it weren't for the board's support, for positions and people to do that and also, um, always being there and, and helping us with those connections. So thank you very much for your support.
And, and I just have to say, you know, a lot of those connections and relationships are things that you began building many years ago, Dr. Gilbert, and your leadership is what helps us do that. Thank you.
Well, I only do what, what, uh, the people, the people that, that I'm privileged to work with, they're the people that do the work.
Also, Dr. Gilbert, I'm sorry, I failed to mention that, we also, we did partner with, uh, Club Yes, who distributed food to a lot of the hotels and motel sites as well, so, yeah.
Thank you. And that, I wanted to add, are you gonna say?
Go ahead.
So, the, the other additional, well, the, how many more snow days do we have?
Uh, six, 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 seven.
Seven.
Thank you.
So everybody?
Seven.
Who's listening, we got seven more days.
Oh, gee.
So I keep hearing the talk already about this, so, seven more days. And the other thing is that we had the Excellence in Education celebration and it was the best ever. So, uh, I know that Lisa Trell worked really hard on that and Doug and Susan Young, but it really was fantastic and I cannot wait to see, uh, how much was raised that we can put directly back into the schools. But I, I appreciate the trustees and everyone that volunteered, and there were some wonderful, supporters, parents, and faculty members from Mitchell Nielsen that were active, very active in, in working on that a bit.
Dr. Gilbert, what, if any, uh, maintenance problems, trees lost? I know we lost one tree that I saw at, at Black Fox over by the driveway and they got that taken down because of the ice. Do we have others in spots?
And I wanna acknowledge, uh, and I'll turn this over to you because you know more about this than I do, uh, I guess, but, uh, really, our maintenance crew, I can't say enough about them. I mean, they were on, on the phone with us from day one, they were out there, they had already salted things before it ever hit, um, they were, they were working and I know, just did amazing work. And, and I will tell you that I know there was a discussion among superintendents, as there always is, and, and a lot of them could not go to school because of the sidewalks and because of ice on things like portables or on parking lots. And we did not have that problem at all. So it was really remarkable what Larry Wilford and his, his crew did. Um, I know we had some trees, I know we had one particularly that Larry was worried about at Reese Rogers, uh, going to the back, but they had cleared that. We still have a little bit left to do with that. As far as structural damage, we, we did have a little issue with the heat, uh, yesterday at one of the schools, but I know that he has worked on that. As far as structural damage though, Gary, what?
Um, we had some trees that lost limbs, not, nothing catastrophic. We had two schools that had minor leaks that we saw, but not through trees, just through the, the freezing and the rain. Um, with really no structural issues at all. The air conditioning, I'm sorry, the heating system at Hobgood, uh, one of those variable refrigerant flow units froze up, and, and actually, three of the units froze up, and , uh, they're, uh, they're going through the controls with it now to make sure what it was, but it looks like it was low on, on the refrigerant in it, and that made that happen. Uh, a little good news about it is, every one of our school buses started, which was great after being off for a week in the cold. And part of that reason is, is I'm, I'm not sure you're all aware, but every one of our buses at the garage are hooked up with an electrical unit to heat the engines to keep them so they can start. I don't know of other districts that have that ability to do that. So that was, that was awesome that we could do that, get those buses warm for those kids before they ever got on them, because they all started, and we didn't have any issues there. So, that was good.
It's really pretty remarkable the way that works because it, it takes just a few phone calls and they're on it. So typically, you can call Ava Jordan, she knows what's happening with the buses. Larry, I know, um, I talked with him to, just to make sure. I also wanna acknowledge dispatch, in, in Murfreesboro Police Department dispatch, I'll typically call them to make sure what I'm seeing is what I think I'm seeing. And particularly on the days when ice is predicted close to the start time, because our buses are rolling two hours before. And so those calls have to be made early. And then Lisa getting the information out, tweeting it out, and also sending. out, tweeting it out and also sending out by email. So it's an interesting process. ESP, they were open, this is the first time that I can remember that we did actually close ESP, but that was necessary. And also even the district office, which is really pretty remarkable. So it's been a tough week, but I think everybody was ready to go back. I know my grandchildren threatened me and told me that if I did not get their mother back into school, that she was going to have to come to work with me because they just couldn't stand it anymore. So, and I think there were several parents that felt that way and several children that felt that way and several teachers that felt that way. So it's been, I appreciate the patience of our parents and their understanding for our needing to close school and the support that they've given us for that. And again, our community partners, Murfreesboro Police Department and our maintenance crew, transportation staff that just do a tremendous job for us.
I can attest to the maintenance because I, in my afternoon and morning walk with our dog, walking around Black Fox, I saw the salt on the ground. I guess it was Friday afternoon before frozen sale Monday. And then when I saw the tree down at Black Fox, they were out, and it was cold when they were out cutting down that tree because I was, anyway. Two things I want to make the board aware of, two bills in the Senate and the House of Representatives in the state of Tennessee, Senate Bill 128 and also Senate Bill 328. One of those deals with the energy efficient, give me the right terminology, EIS?
EESI, Energy Efficiency School Initiative.
What this bill would do, would take some of those public dollars for that and could also divert some of that money to the charter schools and the private, the voucher schools. That bill is, one of the sponsors is Senator Tracy and I have talked with him several times about that one already. And I think it, well, I don't know. He doesn't, I'm not real sure he'll ever get very far. The other one is Senate Bill 328 and that deals with the ability for us to charge people for copies and time, particularly when people come in their companies and ask for emails from wherever, how long. This is also a bill that if you have an opportunity to talk to Senator Tracy or to Don White or Senator Ketron or any of our legislators, you might do that. But I encourage you to look at those bills as much as possible before you try to discuss it, okay? So that we'll know, you'll know what we're talking about to begin with. I don't want to fail to convey to Mr. King, I think, the board's condolences and sympathies with the passing of your mother a week so ago. We were all aware of that. We all had you in our thoughts and our concerns and we continue to do that. It's not an easy task. Is there anything else to come before this board? I have a motion to adjourn.
Some have.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Second?
Second.
Mr. Barrett, thank you. We are adjourned.